I'm so happy today to have Max Steel here. Max, thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
We've talked before on their podcasts and stuff, but I'm really grateful you're here because I wanted to pick your brain on a lot of different topics.
Yeah.
I was just gonna start with, like, I always think, thought your name sounds like a comic book name. Like, I just wanted to compliment you on your name.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, I'm named after my grandmother.
Okay.
Maxine Steele. So that's the, that's the namesake. Um, but yeah, no, it was. It was a superhero.
Was it really?
Yeah, in the eighties, it was a really cheesy robot toy. It was like one of those kind of Teddy Ruxpin type, but like a boxy.
Put a photo of it, yeah.
Yeah, there was one of those. Um, those are kind of cool. And then in the nineties, early two thousands, it came around again and it was like a, oh, it was that weird period where like the internet felt new. And so he was a superhero. His regular name was like Ethan Smith or whatever. And then he transformed into Max Steel. And his hair changed to a dark color or whatever. And he had internet powers.
Oh, he's got cyber powers.
Something, yeah. Ridiculous.
Funny. I'm surprised I didn't remember that because I have like a nineties kid.
It's, it was like.
I'll look him up.
Yeah, look, look them up. They, they exist. There's also at least three porn stars. It's, it's a, it's a ridiculous.
I can see.
It's a ridiculous name, but it, my, so all the men in my family go by their middle names. That's like the tradition in my family. So my legal first name is, is Thomas. And Tom Steele is not better. Like, that's definitely still like.
Between the two, yeah.
But it's, yeah, people are like, it sounds like, like a porn star or an eighties action hero. And I'm like, Tom Steele does too. There's no variation where I'm not gonna get like.
You're always gonna be in there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to comment. I just think it's an awesome name. Um, and I was gonna set you up kind of like, obviously, I've been reading your Substack. It's fantastic. Um, and that is Coach Max Steel.
Coachmaxsteel.substack.com.
Yeah, and that's, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong. I look at it as like covering Portland politics and antisemitism in Portland. Is that?
Yeah, yeah. Yes. Not like totally intentionally with the antisemitism. It just keeps coming up. It's just, there's, it intersects so constantly. Uh, yeah. And that's every time I touch on it, um, that's when like, I get the intense emails from parents where they're like, thank you so much for yelling about this. Cause like, I'm not gonna yell about it and put a target on my kid at school or whatever. So, yeah.
Yeah, it is really interesting. I was reading your one the other day. I was gonna maybe talk about later, but the whole, you had a whole thing about Cinema 21. And like, I don't know, I love like the film community people up here, but I also know that that camp to me is really adjacent to the theater, like the live theater world, which to me has just gone completely off the deep end.
And.
So, but I just thought it was a really interesting article that you wrote about that they played some film that.
Yeah, yeah, they, they played a local documentary. And again, like their reasons for playing it are, that's curatorial voice. They can play what they want to play. I, I think it just, it, it bothered me because.
Well, and I'd recommend people would check out the thing because I, I thought your interaction with the theater owner is really interesting.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I walked away respecting him as much as I, like, it was good, right? And I, I thought that, uh, but you know, yeah, places are gonna show what they want to show. I do find it interesting that Portland has a lot of room for kind of lefty conspiracy theory. And there's, like, there's no tolerance for, you're not, you're not gonna see a conservative conspiracy theory. Yeah.
I thought you brought up some good points of like, you wouldn't show these new films that are on the other side and even like Loose Change back in the day, like.
Yeah.
And, and I live back, you know, back in that time. I don't remember anyone playing that.
There was, um, gosh, one of the theaters down in like, kind of the Old Town Chinatown. It was like, it was like Southwest Third Avenue or something. Somebody, one, one theater played it for like a very limited screening. Cause I remember Willamette Week and Mercury both wrote reviews and the reviews were essentially like, well, this is thought provokingly crazy. Like, this isn't good.
Yeah.
It was similar to when, um, the like, what was it soaked in bleach documentary came out about Kurt Cobain? You know, there were a couple of places that played it, but, and that's fine, but it was broadly covered as like.
Yeah, it's kind of a niche far.
Yeah, we're not sure this is evidence based. This is a little nutty. Yeah. And, yeah, okay.
I just thought, yeah, like, cause I'm, I don't know, my film world stuff, I thought that was an interesting article. Um, and also you are part of the forensic huge park group, which we kind of covered in a rational Portland's episode when you're on there.
Yes.
Um, how's that stuff going?
That, that stuff's going amazingly, actually. Uh, we just, um, so yeah, I'll put on my like nonprofit hat for a second. Um, yeah, we just met with the, gosh, everything is changing names, so I, I, I'm gonna screw up his title, but Vicente Harrison, uh, he was a park ranger. He was head of park rangers. He was then head of, like, you know, he's been lateral, or, uh, not lateral, like, climbing up those ranks. And now his position is leadership in vibrant communities, which is the new name for parks plus children's levy plus arts.
Okay.
Uh, so he.
Kind of like Parks and Culture.
Yeah, exactly. Like basically our, our public spaces, like all come, but which I, I'm not a criticism. I think it's probably a cool idea to combine them. Anyway, we met with Vicente. Um, and it was so refreshing. This guy is, is, how do I want to, he's qualified for his job, right? He got the job because he did the previous jobs well.
Right.
And was promoted up through the ranks. He's got skin in the game, right? Like he, his, his kids are affected by these spaces as well. He's not living in the West Hills in a gated community somewhere. He's not an elected official. And it was one of those moments where I look at the new form of government and think, oh, wow, yeah, we can hire experts again. We don't have to elect them.
Yeah.
Into these positions where like, yeah, let's elect our legislators, but this is, this is fantastic. Like this guy seems imminently qualified for the, yeah, it was great. So, you know, we have people like that showing up. We've got a couple of local politicians coming by soon again to the meetings. So, yeah, I mean, we're, we're, at the very least, we're making a lot of contacts. We're getting some stuff done.
That's great.
The park is safer a bit. It's a bit, a bit over time.
I see constant, just, I just saw that KPTV one this week. Did you see that? That Pete Ferriman went around. It just seemed, it's just funny because it's like, it's, I'm always like, that's great to see, but it seems like they just do the same discovery kind of story of like, hey, this is happening. And we're like.
I know. I, so.
Groups like you guys known about this stuff for a long time.
So the good news, I really like Pete Ferriman. I think Pete's great. Um, we've, we've had some really positive interactions. Uh, he, so this was his follow-up story.
Okay.
I recommend. Yeah, yeah. I recommend everybody like go, go check it out. It's a good follow-up, but, but check out the first story as well, because this was them circling back around and saying like, hey, we acknowledged this was an issue. We were hoping something would be done. Nothing has been done at all. It's the same or worse because it's dark and wintery. Uh, but he did the thing that I did last year, where he went up and spoke directly to the needle handout people and asked them all the same questions I ask, which, which, you know, he got, they got on camera, the kind of answers they give you, which are very evasive.
Cagey.
Cagey, sometimes dishonest.
Changing moment to moment almost sometimes of like.
Yeah.
What they're, where they're coming from seems to be like, oh, now you're.
Well, because their, their ultimate goal is just to keep doing this indefinitely. They want to be left alone. They don't want to be accountable to you or I, like that. They're not interested in good neighbor agreements. They're not interested in being um, licensed or insured by the county or the city. They, they, they think, hey, we're doing God's work. We're out here. Leave us alone. We're not, we're not.
Convince themselves.
Yeah, we're not hurting you. We're not hurting anybody. We're only helping people. Leave us alone. And okay, like it's a perspective, but you got a lot of neighbors saying you are hurting people. We would really like to figure out a way to, for you to do this where it doesn't hurt people. But yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's cool that, yeah, the forensic park's kind of growing and expanding. Um, it seems like I'm just hearing about it more and there's more activity and stuff.
Yeah. Honestly, the podcast, uh, the Rational in Portland podcast helped.
Did it?
Then the next, uh, meeting, we had people show up because of that podcast. It was great. It was great. So, so, yeah, I, um, yeah, I think things are, things are moving.
Cool. Um, actually, before I, I was gonna get into city council stuff, before I do that, is there, are there any particular stack stuff that you want to bring up from your Substack? Um, like I was just reading one this morning. You, you write so much and it's like, I wish I could write how you write if that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very.
I'll write like two paragraphs and that's all I got.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm very angry is the thing. Uh, I'd like, I keep.
Event something.
I know. And I keep getting people being like, Max, you're such an optimist. I'm like, I says, this is how my anger manifests. I'm a person who, when I get very angry, I get, um, I get like a big clarity of thought in those, in those rages. And so instead of just screaming nonsense, I, yeah, like hammer out stuff. So the more I write, this, this is how you know how mad I am and like how things are going for me. It's like.
Barometer.
Oh, he put out three pieces this week.
I mean, I think it's great.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I don't think, I, I think, I think people can check out the Substack. Right now I'm, I'm running through like a three or four part series on kind of a return to normalcy. I'm trying to like lay out how we get back to, I don't, I hate to say the Portland of like 2012, but kind of the Portland of 2012, right? Like.
That's, yeah, part, definitely part of my kind of goal with the culture of the show and stuff is to, you know, get it back to some kind of, um, I don't know if, not cooperate, but just like a more collaborative kind of overall city.
Yeah.
It just seems like that's definitely gone nowadays, but.
Yeah. And it, and it, I mean, it was a silly place, like Portlandia skewered us for a reason, right? Like it's, it was a silly, silly little city.
Yeah.
But it did feel like somewhere around 2016, right? Around sort of that, that election, um, a, a couple of groups looked at Portland and, you know, all of our silly little progressive fun stuff and thought, what if actually all of this was garbage and we needed to burn it down? Like, because it's nowhere near radical enough. Like, we're, we're not even doing fractionally enough in our ridiculous little town. And I think we're still reeling from that. We're just reeling from this like, wait, you thought like we were the epicenter of reactionary conservative white supremacy? Really? Like that, that was your take on the town where, you know, coffee shops had land acknowledgements on the menu? That was like too conserv- okay, great, like.
Yeah, it is, it is, yeah, wild how it's still just, yeah, I don't know, in recovery mode and.
Yeah.
Who knows? I don't, I'm, you know, I'm being perfectly honest. I don't know if it'll ever come out. I hope it will, but in return back to that kind of full gust, but, um.
Yeah.
It's hard to say. Um, but yeah, I was gonna ask you about your, what are your takeaways from the first kind of month? I was gonna say we've, we've now seen this Portland city council inaction, I'm putting in quotes for a month. You might say inaction as one word.
Yes, yes, yes.
But what are your takeaways after the first month of seeing them operate?
So that's like first week, they, they played really nice. They played like really, really nice. I mean, there was this silly fight over the council president that was embarrassing.
Took like 10 rounds of voting.
It was like nine, but yeah, yeah, it was ridiculous. And, um, and there was a lot of, we saw a lot of that weird Portland, like it's not mission creep. I don't know, this weird contextualizing, the, the decalibration of Portland where you had Olivia Clark being put up as like a centrist. And then, you know, Candace Avalos was really the only acceptable level of progressive we could stomach. And then Alana Pertle-Ginni was like, maybe a moderate compromise. And what, how is Alana Pertle-Ginni a moderate compromise? Right? And I don't mean to insult the woman. Like, she's just extremely left.
I get what you're saying. And I loved, you had that graphic on one of your things where you put them all.
Yeah.
On this political spectrum. I'll put a photo of it up here, but.
Yeah.
That's how I view it too, is it just like, because people ask me all the time, who's the most conservative or who's the most progressive? And I'm just like, they're all kind of in the same lump category here.
Like the most conservative members of our city council, like are Kamala Harris, like.
They're still pretty left.
They're, they're, they're collaborators with Kamala Harris. They loved, like.
Yeah.
Olivia Clark made jokes about being a childless cat lady on the campaign trail to like rock us applause, right? Like thi- this is, you know, that's our furthest right is, 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 you know.
Or a lot of people say Dan Ryan, who I love too. And I'm just like, same thing. Like he's a pretty progressive guy.
Exactly. And again, not a criticism, but there, I don't even know that they rank center-left. They're like still left of center-left.
If you asked all of them, nobody would say center. Cause that's a, that's a bad word in Portland.
And the problem is that, and you could see this with Alana Pertle-Ginni, uh, she really, I think that, that hurt her. Like, I think that, that really bothered her.
Politically.
I mean, she, because she pushed back on that. And I think the first couple of days, you saw her a little bit. Uh, I mean, I don't know somebody's heart, so I don't know that she was performing, but for the first couple of days, she, she kind of like aired even more left to try to get that stink of like moderate compromise off of her. And I thought, this is not what we want. We don't want people trying to like perform.
Right.
Yeah, she's already hyper progressive. Like she doesn't, but, but I get it. If your identity is hyper progressive and somebody's like, yeah, you're kind of middle of the road. I can see why that would really hurt. Um, I do think her feelings were hurt on that. I know almost to, to a fact, Olivia Clark is very bothered by the fact that she has been cast as the like.
The most extreme.
Yeah, the Republican whisperer or whatever. Like I, she, I, I can tell she can't stand that. Um, and, and I feel for her. That's gotta suck. I don't know. I'm.
Yeah. In this environment, it's.
Yeah.
Politically very difficult.
Yeah. So first, first couple of weeks, uh, first couple of days went okay. Um, and then in the last few, just this last week, like the, the stuff's starting to come a little unraveled. It's starting to be.
Is it in terms of like block voting and you see these kind of divisions?
And I'm starting to get proven right, right? We had, uh, Angelita Mario come out hard against Janelle Bynum in the media, referring to her as a coward.
I didn't actually watch it. I just saw all these, I'm mad at kind of the Oregonian all these for saying like, she's, she getting these viral videos about Janelle Bynum. And just like, why are you giving her more steam on it?
No, I mean, it was, it was, it was classic kind of, yeah, she referred to Janelle Bynum as a coward and a person basically without moral, uh, moorings, right? It was, it was essentially like, who paid you your pieces of silver? Like, you know, you sold out immigrants for, for what? Some power play because you want to kiss the ring? It was childish. It was unprofessional. And it was interesting to see exactly what I expected. The, the DSA candidates ranked up behind her. And they were like, we stand with Angelita. Uh, Janelle Bynum is a coward. If you don't want to get called a coward, don't be a coward. These are people who won their seats with like less than 24% of their small districts. And, you know, they're, they're, they're calling a woman who has won multiple elections, who flipped a seat, right?
Yeah.
Flipped this, I mean, a seat that had just previously been flipped, but that tells you that's a contested.
Yeah.
Area. You know, our first, our first black like rep, like, she's a coward.
That's what I was, I was thinking about that yesterday and this morning of like, that tells, it tells me a lot about where the DNC is today of like, and also just the local stuff we were just talking about. The Portland environment is so bad that they're now going after people for being not far left enough.
Yes.
And like you said, this is a seat that just got flipped.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should. In a historic kind of election and it's, and that's, they're doing this infighting a month in.
Yeah.
It's just incredible to me.
I, and I, and I, I, this is me getting to be smug about being proven right, but I said the whole time, like the, the Democrats in Oregon played footsie with these DSA kids and the DSA kids were perfectly happy to let them. And I, I mean, I was saying the whole time, they're gonna stab you in the back the moment.
Come after you.
They don't like you either. They just, they hate you less, but that's not a reason to form a collaboration. You should have backed. Oh, again, for Portland, more moderate, but you should have backed Democrat candidates. You should have backed people who have their heads screwed on straight, but instead you, you, you went for those like identity-based, you know, progressive points. You were like, well, I mean, John Walker's pro-union, but he doesn't have pro-union on his banner. So like, I'm gonna back the candidate that has.
Yeah.
Come on, like.
Yeah. One of the reasons I was gonna bring that up with this sort of first month stuff is like, I kind of predicted, and you might've also in the, in the months after the election, that these first few months especially, but like the first year of this Portland city council is gonna be eaten up. Specifically the people, people like Angelita and my perspective, who are just gonna be focused on national stuff. And I understand how she thinks it's tied to local.
Sure.
But I just look at this, you know, even the Oregonian coverage of this video and stuff of just like, we could be actually spending this time thinking about local planning and all this other stuff, but she's on TikTok making videos about. So anyway, I, that's all to say, like, for me, that prediction is holding up so far in the first month of this. Like, these guys are so distracted with.
Yes.
Other things. And even when I watch the meetings, that's kind of what it seemed, I feel like, I see a lot of genuine interest from people like Dan and Steve Novick, Eric, and, and even Mitch, like.
You know what?
Just strange. I like his line of questioning and stuff.
Yeah, I can't stand Mitch on a personal level, but he has impressed. Like.
On the meetings.
Yeah, he's, he, oh, he's, yeah, it's really frustrating.
I know that was gonna kind of.
I, it really drives me nuts because I like, I, I, this is where I have to draw my line of like, remember Max, your number one motivation is what's best for Portland and your number two motivation is revenge. But like, one has to be Portland first. You gotta put the revenge aside. Yeah. No, he's been doing good, damn it.
I see that, but then I see, you know, maybe I would say a third of the council very quiet. They very, don't have a lot of questions. And then they're kind of way more active on social media, focused on this other stuff. So that's kind of holding up.
Yeah.
At least from my perspective.
I agree. And they chased down, you'll see it. Angelita will chase down what the, um, the, uh, Women's Shelter, Salvation Army Women's Shelter, where she's like, aren't they super homophobic?
Oh, really?
JOHS, like employees had to be like. We understand the event that you're talking about, which happened years and years and years ago. They're under completely different leadership now. We, no, we would not be partnering.
Yeah. Cause that's a recent, wasn't that Keith's thing?
Yeah, this Keith thing is a recent opening. And, and, and yeah, I know exactly the scandal that Angelita is referring to. And, and it was a bad scandal and it was years ago. And yes, that, that gave people pause working with the Salvation Army. That's been dealt with, right? That we, we need these shelters.
Yeah. Well, that's the thing that I always think about. It's like, you're, you're not gonna, you know, and, and that stigma, like you said, that's been around for decades, but it's also like, we're gonna take every shelter we can get.
We gotta, we gotta. If, if the DSA wants to open a shelter, I'm gonna frown about it, but I'm gonna take it. Like, yeah, it's, yeah. And then, I mean, you see this with, uh, Tiffany, uh, Koyama Lane, oh gosh, this was two or three days ago. She went on her tear about like Clean and Safe essentially, and their, you know, their close ties to the, uh, Metro Chamber, which she, which she, you know, very deftly like recent, which is actually the Portland Business Alliance. And this is their line. They have to remind.
Some of that in that meeting, and that's what they're talking about.
They have to remind, and listen, there's, there's real criticisms of the money being spent on Clean and Safe and those executive and leadership salaries. There's, there's real questions there, but the issue that they keep tagging it as like, and remember they're connected to the Portland Business Alliance, because this has been the boogeyman.
Yeah.
You know, yeah. It's always been the.
It even just sounds funny. It's like.
Yeah.
You're clearly that anti-business that you don't want any.
Yeah. The, the idea that the Illuminati in Portland is just like seven business leaders. Okay. Then why aren't their candidates winning? Why aren't like, why aren't they getting their bills passed? Like, if there are Illuminati, they are absolutely failing at being one. But, yeah. Uh, no, I think you're right. Um, and on that sort of wasting time, uh, the, they've had all these like meet your counselor, um, city club, city clubs putting on these events.
They've done a couple so far.
Couple so far. There are more to come. Uh, the district two one, I did not attend. I, I watched online, although I had some, some, some people we both know that were at that one. Uh, actually former guests, uh, on this, on this fine program, but, uh, the first question, the first audience question was a plant. The first audience question was Jamie Partridge.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, he identified himself as a retired mail carrier, which is absolutely true. What is additionally true is Jamie Partridge is mailman Jamie, the DSA member. He's a loud and outspoken, like DSA organizer. And his first question was directed to the group, what are we gonna do about Trump's like deportation orders? And it's like, they had limited time to speak on issues of the city. We're a sanctuary city in a sanctuary state. And that's essentially what Alana Pertle-Ginni had to say is she was like.
There's only so many times you can say that.
Yeah, like we have set in place, kind of everything that we need to have set in place and doing a bunch of extra, she, I mean, she didn't say symbolic stuff, but it would be symbolic, might paint a target on Portland, right?
Give it more attention, yeah.
Which is an interesting criticism. This is one of the ways in which I'm really surprised by Alana Pertle-Ginni. I think she's, I, she's really kind of walked a line of like, I think she wants to keep her job, which is great. Good. I want her to want to keep her job.
That's since being elected president of the council or, or just always.
I don't know. Even on the campaign trail, she refused to sign any of the pledges.
Oh, really?
She didn't sign the note.
Follow her camp candidacy.
I didn't either. I just wrote her off as like, yeah, she has a lot of experience and she's qualified for the job. She's also just really, really far left. And she seemed to be taking pictures and palling around with all the people I didn't like. So I thought, meh, I'll pass on her. But she didn't sign, you know, no police union money pledge, although I don't think she took any police union money. She didn't sign any like no oil money. She didn't sign any of these symbolic pledges.
Renters.
The renters thing. She wouldn't sign the people's forum. She didn't sign the ceasefire letter. She, she, and she made this public statement, like, I'm not signing any of these things. I'm not making these promises. I'm like, she's kind of showing up on that. Like, she's, she's been, she's been, she's been very pleasantly surprising that she has clearly, in a way that Jamie Dunphy has not drawn a distinction between herself and that extreme left wing of the council. Where she's like, no, I'm gonna represent Portland from a very progressive footing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It does seem like, at least from the meetings I've seen her in, she's trying to, as far as being president of the council, it seems like she's trying to do a decent job of being fair about that.
I, yeah, I think that's every evidence supports that. Yeah, yeah. All the evidence supports that. I, I think, um.
Of course, but again, we're only a month in, but.
Yeah, but, but it, but like you said, we're a month in and they've already been sort of like shots fired, you know, in like, the, the people we thought were gonna act up have been acting up and she has not. She has, she's stayed the course. So, yeah. Um, no, I think you're right. The first year is gonna be a bit of chaos. And, um, yeah, well, I mean, we'll see. Well, well, I don't think the two-year.
Yeah. What do you feel about the next 2026 coming up?
I, I think Tiffany and Angelita are in trouble.
They're the most at risk of.
I think they're the most at risk. I think Mitch is already, I really want to unseat him. And I think he is, he knows how much his district or how, how much his district, how many people in his district want to unseat him. And so I think he's very, very, he's smart. He's taken the steps. He needs to make sure that he has some real victories to show and has some compromises to show. And he's worked with Eric Zimmerman on something and he's worked with, you know, he was the switch vote that got Alana Pertle-Ginni to be the president. He, you know, he took a lot of flack from that, from the far left in Portland. They were so disappointed in him. He was a traitor. Uh, so, yeah, he, he'll, he'll be harder to unseat unfortunately for me, but, uh, yeah, I think, I think, I think Tiffany and Angelita.
Couple vulnerabilities.
I think they're really vulnerable.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was just thinking too about the whole, because it's, you know, it's so hard to forecast this far out, but also just thinking about the midterm, national midterms and how that will play into it, but.
Yeah.
We'll see how it goes. Um, yeah. So let's get into this kind of, one of the main reasons I want to have you on to get, because like people ask me about the DSA, like on our city council and just in general, and I have limited knowledge compared to what you know. So, so I just wanted to have you kind of tell, you know, for, for, I'm gonna play somebody who knows a little about it. Maybe it sounds good to me. Maybe, maybe I think of Bernie Sanders and the little thing where he's doing this and the cold with the COVID mask. I don't know.
Yeah.
Maybe people just, it's appealing to them and they think, what's the big deal?
Yeah.
Um.
That makes sense.
And then, you know, because from what I know, it's a pretty extremist organization.
Yes. And, and more so over the years.
Okay.
So.
Getting stronger in that sense.
Yes, yes. Um, yeah, the, I mean, if, if we go back to say 20, 2014, 2015, I think you're probably right, right? Like their image is they're Bernie bros, right? The, the, the DSA are the people who rode Bernie's how, coattail, his movement. They, they rode that Bernie movement to some level of support.
That socialism of healthcare for all, all this kind of.
Yeah. And this, and this is where a little bit the branding gets confusing. So a lot of times you'll hear, you know, there aren't democratic socialists. They're just, I mean, they're just like us, but they want, um, Scandinavian style social safety nets. And that's, that's where the words and the order of the words matters. So what that describes Scandinavian democracy with social safety nets, that actually describes social democracy.
Gotcha.
So the, the thing for people to remember, because this stuff gets, it gets like categorizing, uh, genres of metal.
Yeah.
It's like, it's not really speed metal. It's actually kind of like death core. Yeah. The thing to remember is what's the last word? Cause the last word is the thing that it is, and the first word is how it's modified. So social democracy is democracy first. And then it's got aspects of social theory, socialism in interspersed. Democratic socialism is socialism. Where you're allowed to vote. That's it.
That makes a lot of sense. Yeah.
The end goal is there's no private economy. The economy is nationalized. Housing is, is nationalized. Everything is put in the hands of the people, the state. I mean, it's, it is full socialism. It's not socialism inspired.
And is that, sorry to.
Oh, yeah.
Ask you that, but is that, is one of the targets or goals to kind of remove the republic from that kind of sense of, of our country?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, the, the, the end goal is just to get to essentially communism, but it like in their eyes, real communism, you know, that whole communism has never really been tried.
We've never seen that.
We never, yeah. So the goal is to get to that utopian communism, just democratically.
Gotcha.
And there's no violent revolution. There's no military coup. You just slowly kind of like to ship a thesius. You just switch out one part after the other, and then you end up with socialism. Which, you know, yeah, great. That's way less bloodshed. I mean, that's, that's cool. Like I prefer.
Less, uh, yeah, bloody revolutions and.
I prefer that. I don't really want to be guillotined, but, um, yeah, it, it, it is socialism. It's if, if anybody thinks that this group just wants healthcare for all, yeah, they want healthcare for all. And they also want social housing, but they don't want a couple of housing projects. They don't think that private rentals should be legal because they're exploitative, right?
So the, yeah, the free healthcare for all is kind of the, the bottom of the iceberg.
Yeah, it's the easy thing to sell.
Yeah.
It's the easy thing to sell.
Or I guess the top of the iceberg.
Yeah, yeah, the tip. Yeah. The tip of the iceberg is, is, and, and that's it. They sell you on like the really nice stuff. They sell you on, on healthcare, preschool for all. They sell you on.
Basic income.
Basic, yeah, yeah. You, they'll sell a little bit UBI, um, public control of utilities. Then you get into public housing.
The banks, if you were telling me, was blowing my mind.
The S, Bank of Portland. So the, and this is it. You switch out, you, you kick, uh, Xfinity Comcast out of the city. Portland has its own broadband. Portland has its own bank. Portland has its own housing. And it's like, when you start adding it all together, you start realizing like, wait, what is privately owned? And they're like, very little. That's the goal.
At the end of the day, it's all government.
That's the goal. The goal is bigger, bigger, bigger government.
Imagine the, how delightful the DMV is and then have that. Go to every aspect of life.
Yes.
Anyway, I don't know.
No, no. I mean, this is, this is right. Like, this is the idea. Everybody's had a shitty landlord. I get it. Everybody has had a shitty landlord at some, I mean, unless I guess you've never rented for some reason and good for you. Um, we've all had a shitty boss. We've all had a shitty landlord. We have all wanted protections in place to protect us from those things. That would be social democracy, a strong protections. Democratic socialism would be, yeah, you're never gonna fix those things. So get rid of them. You shouldn't, like, every job should be a union job. A mom and pop convenience store with two employees, those two employees should still be part of a union.
That is a really funny thing, cause it's something I've thought a lot more about as I get older and I try to explain it to younger people like. Cause they're, they're very much in that mindset of everything's gotta be union. And I tell them, look, you know, when I was twenty, nineteen or eighteen years old or whatever. I worked at a buffet that's now out of business, but I don't think. People working at any place for six months at a time or a year making minimum wage, like you don't really need, that's such a transitional role.
Yeah.
Not everything needs to be unionized, you know? I don't know. And that's just such a stigma to say that in this country at this point, but.
Yeah, well, and especially in the city, it's a, it's a union town.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the issue gets into, yeah, there are just sizes of businesses where unions are not appropriate.
Yeah, especially small, like you said, mom and pops.
Ultimately though, I mean, this is, this is where like small business owners. The DSA doesn't care about small business owners. The DSA doesn't like small businesses. Honestly, a lot of the unions don't like small businesses because they're not unionizable.
They're not grabbing that income.
Yeah, yeah. In some cases, the, the employers actually outnumber the employees in these small businesses, right? If it's a family owned business and you're the one non-family member who works at the car wash, like you're not gonna unionize against the four family, like. It's fine. You took that job knowing you were, yeah. Um, and I don't want the little Korean bodega at the end of my street, like for their single non-family member employee. Who's a really nice guy. I don't, don't think he needs a union. Yeah.
And that's, yeah, I could see that happening. Like let's drive them out, cause they don't have the little badge on their door that says they're unionized.
Yeah.
And, I know, same with, it extends to everything. Starbucks and all that stuff, you know, they're a lot of them are unionized now.
Yeah, well, and anecdotally, I mean, I have known a lot of people in the Powell's Union, like Powell's, Powell's books as a union, um, which I think is a joke. I, I think it's actually a terrible union.
It's a crazy one. Yeah, that's more, we're not talking to Adam the other week. That's kind of what I was talking about, specifically the union, just as crazy shit there. I don't know why, yeah, but.
Well, and, and when they had their, uh, so their employees were essentially furloughed during COVID, cause they had to shut the store down. Um, they, the union argued that that was not, that was in violation of the union contract. That went into arbitration. The union lost that. So the union was not able to protect people's jobs at Powell's, but what the union was able to do for years and years was protect the jobs of. Employees who engaged in workplace bullying over political issues. There were employees in that store and probably still are, but certainly back, you know, ten years ago, there were employees who, you know. They were known to harass their coworkers over political shit.
Personal stuff.
Just personal stuff, spreading rumors about people. This person's a turf, that like, this is absolutely inappropriate. Creating a hostile workplace. Nothing could be done about these employees without like seven or eight or nine, whatever write-ups, this long process.
Sounds wonderful.
Sounds, sounds wonderful to work with somebody like that, to know that this union, which cannot protect your job if there's like an economic downturn. Can't really get you better wages in a, in a measurable way, but will certainly protect the person bullying you in the workplace.
Protecting one specific viewpoint.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Um, and you know, I know you had, um, Andy Ngo on a while back, so his book.
Yeah, they refuse to.
Well, so.
As far as I know, or they've said something about it.
This was the trick. I can, I can do a little correction on this, which is fine. They, they, they technically carried it at the warehouse, at the warehouse. They didn't.
So it was like a visibility thing.
They didn't put it in the store. They decided it was too controversial. And yet the fact that they still carried it in the warehouse, they were protested. Every day there was a little crowd of like Antifa kids on the corner protesting them. And the union kind of supported that. There were union members that would join them out there protesting this book. And it's just the wildest thing to me to be a bookstore employee or a bookseller and you're like, let's.
Essentially for censorship.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, agree with them or not. Come on.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's gotta be a thousand books in Powell's that I think are gross and written by horrible people. There were probably more than a thousand. I'm not.
There's what, four stories, three stories?
Yeah, I'm not gonna protest, like, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, they got the union stuff. Um. I'm trying to think, like, tell me about how. Like, do you know of other cities that have the same? Cause I was asked recently about that too, of like, do other cities have this kind of push to get DSA members on the city council?
Yeah, a little bit. They've got a couple. Philly has a pretty, pretty, um, serious scene. You know, off, off the top of my head, Portland and Philly, I think are the two most successful. Portland is by far the most successful. That is, that's like their crowning achievement is what they've done in Portland. Um, and they did that with a lot of money from the Working Families Party. They did that honestly with a lot of support from the unions. SEIU backed them in a big way for some strange reason. Uh, I just don't know how their values align with the SEIU's, but, okay.
They're given money directly to the DSA or support.
It was in-kind donations and also money, right? So the, and the endorsements, right?
Okay.
This is, this is kind of that thing I talk about with like the same sixty people. All of these endorsement groups, all these boards. You, you'll start seeing the same names over and over and over again. And you'll realize like, oh, that person worked comms for SEIU for years. And now he's on five endorsement boards for Basic Rights Oregon, for the Sierra Club or whatever. You know, so it's that network that they plugged them into. And that's why when you look at, you know, Tiffany Koyama Lane's. Like endorsement board, it's enormous. You'd think she was the most famous woman in Portland. She got every, you know, the animal rights people, the environment. It's a hundred logos. But if you actually boiled those down to like, how many distinct groups is this? It's half or fewer, right?
It all kind of truncated to like a very shorter list.
Yes, yes. Um, so they plug them into that ecosystem, which is really, really beneficial. Uh, and make sure to keep them off of people's do not rank lists. Yeah, um, and that's kind of the. Where you run into trouble if you make one of those groups angry. It, that's a little bit of a blacklisting happens. You, you get on a do not rank list. Yeah. Um, so there's, there's, there's that. Uh, Portland is the most successful by far. Uh. And some of that is just, I mean, it's Portland. We, we. I don't know what's wrong with us, really.
What's, the angle that's really interesting to me is just like, you know, I don't know. And I feel like me and Kristen and just everyone, a lot of people that we're involved with. Like, we're trying to get out of this extremism, but then there's groups like this who to me are trying to draw us back into extremism.
Yes.
And that's kind of what's just really interesting to me. And, and also like, I just think from. However, you view the new city council and how the system was set up and voted in and all that stuff. That kind of block voting just seems antithetical to, to what I would want on a city council. Like I want everyone independently thinking for themselves. I don't want this kind of weird block voting.
Yeah.
That just, I don't know, it has a bigger agenda than any single, single vote or issue.
Yeah, the pitch is that it's supposed to be a nonpartisan city council, right?
Right.
This is supposed to represent Portlanders.
That's a good one.
You have a partisan party. You have a partisan political party directly, right? They have three. You know, avowed members and, and then there's Angelita, the, the honorary member.
Okay. I always thought there was three, there was four kind of total technically.
Uh, so, oh no, sorry, you're right. Uh, yes. Let's see, we've got Samir, we've got Tiffany and we've got Mitch. Those are the, those are the three, those are the three dues paying.
Gotcha.
Members. Yeah. And then you've got Angelita's like. Basically, she's an, she's an honorary member, right? They'll endorse her, they'll back her and she'll back them. She's not, yeah.
So it's a third of the council.
It's a third of the council. And then aside from that, you know, you've got Candace Avalos and Jamie Dunphy, who will vote with them most of the time. And that gives you fifty percent, right? So then you're really fighting over. Alana Pertle-Ginni and Steve Novick. Yeah, you're really trying to hope that Steve Novick and Alana Pertle-Ginni will swing your way more often than not. Cause half the council is, is, is gonna go that direction. Um, and that's, that's where I don't. I just think Candace Avalos is wrong. I think, I think they're championing her now, but I mean. Yeah, they benefit from riding her coattails into these positions, but I, well, unless she's even further left than I think she is, I, I.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good, um, kind of overview of it. And I mean, but as far as like scope. In a national sense, there, this is a pretty large organization.
So they, they popped off in a big way. Um, you know, again, like during Occupy, they grew a little bit. Twenty sixteen, they got some boosts, but no, nationally, they're, they're kind of broke. That's the funny thing. They, the, the Democratic Socialists of America don't have any money. Um, the money came from the Working Families Party, which is. You know, an allied but separate organization.
Uh, that's a much bigger.
It's a much bigger, yeah, cause for years they've just been more mainstream. They're just kind of union family group, right? And it's just like kind of empty platitudes of like, wouldn't it be great if the top one percent didn't have, like, this is kind of a bumper sticker party.
Heard a few people say that and it's one of those words, it's so built into the name. It's so hard to be like, well, like look into that more and see, see what they do.
Look who they support.
People just look at the name and they're like, it sounds great.
Well, and if you check their social media, it's not crazy stuff. It's just like, wouldn't it be great if, you know, a single income could buy the groceries for a family? It's like, yeah, of course. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's just very nice idealistic stuff, but then, yeah, you look at like, who are they paying? Where's their money going? And they're supporting DSA candidates. They're supporting, yeah. Um, I think the thing to remember about the Portland DSA in particular is they grew out of twenty sixteen. Pre twenty sixteen, Portland DSA was essential. I mean, they, they had died in like the nineties.
But that was like fuel.
Yeah, twenty sixteen was fuel for them. They plugged into the like resistance, right? They plugged into Black Lives Matter and resisting Trump. And by twenty twenty. They were involved in every single one of those riots, right? Like they were downtown. Their leadership was arrested multiple times. Like everybody kind of remembers those riots as BLM and Antifa. And the anarchists. A lot of the BLM groups actually drew back as those riots became more and more violent. You had a lot of black groups saying, whoa, whoa, whoa. This is, doesn't represent black Portlanders at all. Terrence Hayes has talked about that, like that, that movement only benefited a very small number of people. The DSA was in it. They were in it the whole time alongside Rose City Antifa. Those were the groups that were like a hundred days, a hundred and fifty days. Let's, you know, may the bridges we burn light the way.
I still remember, I don't know if I've talked about it on here, but I'm sure you, and maybe you were like part of that back then. I don't know. But I remember being around like certain people at their house and stuff and it, it literally be like every night, like especially in the summer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I would just hear people and they'd get leaf blowers and all this shit ready and they're like, we're going out again. And it's just, it was just wild to me that like.
Yeah.
These guys were committed every single night. We're gonna go out and just destroy or whatever they do.
Yeah, yeah. So, so this is the thing, I think, um, it, it's people just got a really weird short-term memory on it. They remember those riots as being like BLM.
Yeah.
And they were in some cities.
Initially, is what you're saying.
Yeah, and, and in other cities, you know, Chicago, like the, the BLM organizations kept control of that stuff. But here, I mean, it really was like Rose City Antifa, Pop Mob. Portland DSA, like, yeah, it, yeah. And you had, you know, you had, uh, what is Don't Shoot PDX. Like you had a couple of those groups that stayed in. But it really was, that was the criticism. It was a bunch of white kids from the suburbs, like smashing shit. It was, wasn't, this was not.
And when I was talking about those people, that's basically what they look like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And if you went to their houses, again, they had like giant posters of, of Chairman Mao on the wall. It was, it was really unsettling. Um, but the number of them that are pro North Korean is, is, is always surprising. Yeah. It's, so yeah, that, that's, I mean, the thing I think people really.
Yeah.
Yeah, they need to remember they were part of that entire movement.
And they still have a, you know, enough strongs or organizational structure here in Portland, the Portland DSA.
Yeah, so after twenty sixteen, they ballooned back up. That they got, uh, Emily Goldenfields and Olivia Cappy were pretty instrumental. In plugging them into the school system. Uh, they had a couple of members that were instrumental in plugging them into the different unions. And so this is why they, they got this power. They knew that we need to position people in every union in the city if we can. And not just position them in the unions, but get them on boards, get them in leadership positions.
Right.
And organize and make sure that our message, that we are at every strike in our shirts. That we show up for every mutual aid action, every protest. When people see the little hands clasping logo. With, I want them to think, this has been my ally. My ally has been, these people have always shown up for me. And I mean, they, they did, they put in years of, of work building that brand. Um, it's, which is impressive.
Yeah, I was thinking it sounds successful in that sense, yeah.
It sounds very successful. Um, but you know, this is, uh, they, I mean, they got into the schools, like they're in. But it's not like a couple of teachers or DSA members. There is a, the vice president of the teachers' union is in DSA leadership, right? Like they are in the schools in decision-making roles within the union, numerous faculty and staff are DSA members. And yeah, they definitely recruit kids. They recruit kids in our schools like directly. They're hardly covert about it. They're like a little bit.
Like they'll just put out flyers and all that kind of stuff.
I mean, yeah, this would, so this was the whole like Palestine in the classroom controversy, Willamette Week, Oregonian covered it. This was, this was DSA steered, right? This was from the DSA and they are members and you know, some of their like sister organizations. Uh, because that's been Olivia Cappy's big thing for years. Before she was a DSA person, she was boycott, divestment sanction. Uh, she was wrapped up in CARE Oregon, like her, her like animus in life is, is very, very anti-Israel. And so she made sure that's always gonna be a part of the DSA playbook in Portland, that that's where net, where unions. Getting rid of Israel.
Top bullets.
No, I mean, it's, it's weird. Like if you look at the people's platform from last year, like the number three bullet is about Israel. And you're like, this is the Portland people's, how is the number three bullet have anything to do with a foreign nation? But okay. That seems strange, uh, and pointed, but this is, so the Palestine in the classroom thing was there. What they did was essentially they took the Black Lives Matter stuff. Portland Public Schools allowed Black Lives Matter activism in classrooms. Because the argument is that it is truly bipartisan. It, it's anti-racist.
Yeah, well, as I say, I know they have some of that anti-racist stuff literally in like, it's in our city code and all this.
It's in the curriculum. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I could see that stuff falling in there.
Yes, so the, and the argument was teachers have gotta be able to wear Black Lives Matter t-shirts in the classroom. This is not about who you're voting for for president. And you know what? There, there's like, it's not even a bad argument. I'm, I'm not exercised by seeing a Black Lives Matter t-shirt on a, on a teacher. But it opens the door, so.
Yeah, when you start having one ideology or whatever you wanna call that, you can.
Yeah.
See how you get to anti-Israel or.
So yeah, so then you have teachers wearing From the River to the Sea t-shirts in the classroom and handing out literature and hanging Palestinian flags. And they're getting reported for it because of course they are. This is absolutely inappropriate to do in a classroom. It would be inappropriate the other direction.
Yeah, you think about, oh, I was gonna say almost any environment, it seems totally inappropriate.
Oh, yeah. Oh, like have them invite me into the classroom and I'll give a speech called, actually, Israel is the original land back program. Like, no. It's absolutely inappropriate to do. This is a captive audience of students. You should be teaching them, but they used this argument of like, well, but you let us teach about environmentalism. And you let us teach about anti-racism. So isn't this kind of the same thing? And this was, you know, this is the DSA, like that this is their plan. It's like, we're gonna get politics into the classroom. Because everything is political. Right now, what they're doing through Next Up Action Fund.
Okay.
Uh, which is an environmental group. So it's allowed in classrooms, right? Next Up Action Fund is allowed to do stuff in schools. Schools do things with Next Up. Because Next Up is a youth movement for climate justice.
So that's how they kind of work their way into the classroom.
It's a lot of cafes at these climate justice marches, like a lot of them, but, okay. Uh, and if you go to these climate justice marches, you will see DSA banners. You will straight up just see giant DSA flags at them. But they're allowed in the schools because climate justice is an impending like threat.
It's wild though, cause like, how do you get from that to basically guiding kids on how they should vote when they're eighteen?
Yes, so, but this is the trick. Because Next Up Action Fund has sponsored along with like CanFam and a couple of these. State legislators, uh, a new bill that they're proposing for the second time. It didn't, it died in committee last session. Uh, we wanna lower the voting age.
Yeah.
To sixteen and seventeen for school boards to start. We're gonna, we're gonna pilot test that. We're gonna get sixteen and seventeen year olds to vote for their school board representation, cause that's direct representation.
I was gonna say, I see voting for the school board, yeah.
But that's, they have always been very clear and the DSA is clear in their platform. We want the voting age dropped to sixteen.
Well, you know, it's funny, cause I don't know if you saw this, I saw a thing yesterday, this is up in Washington state, but there was a similar thing where they. It was actually in Vancouver, but, um, there, some teacher was sending this email to all her kids to like try to vote against. They can't even vote, which is why I'm laughing, but vote against a bill that would require like some type. They can't even vote, which is why I'm laughing, but vote against a bill that would require like some type of in person voting in Washington. And so they're it's like a similar type of thing where they're trying to inject this like guidance to their students.
Yeah, that's that's the trick. I get parents pushing back on me when I bring up this sixteen seventeen year old bill because they're like, Max, I know sixteen year olds who are really bright. Of course I do too. I train sixteen year olds. I they're very bright. I don't talk to them about politics. I don't know where their politics are because it's inappropriate, but. That's not my my issue is not sixteen year olds voting. My issue is that you've got a group who is already allowed in the schools, who is telling the kids this is good. Because they want an avenue to campaign. They want to be able to campaign directly to your kids. In schools where they are a captive audience.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not like that Pink Martini show where during the intermission, all the mayoral candidates came out and people booed it because they didn't want. You can leave. You can vote with your dollar.
Yeah, you're literally a captive audience.
Yeah, you're not campaigning for mayor in a public school, but they're kind of trying to fix that. Um, not kind of, they're trying to fix that.
Well, I was gonna say, and maybe there's a hot take from you, but I don't even agree with the six like lowering the voting age to me seems like a dumb idea, but.
And that and that's fine. And that's a whole.
That's my opinion.
No, and that's fine. And that's a whole debate we can have. I haven't. I know a number of people who are from other countries. Uh, I I know a Brazilian woman and she's like, voting age is sixteen in Brazil. It actually makes kids more politically engaged. She has she made a really interesting argument and I was interested in hearing it. My issue is not necessarily the bill to lower the voting age.
It's just injecting that in.
And who is sponsoring it? It's only sponsored by these niche groups. The Democratic Party is not sponsoring this. The Republican Party sure as hell isn't sponsoring it. And this is it. Who would?
More fringe.
Who would have access to these kids and it wouldn't be, it there would never be a conservative voice would have access to these kids in the schools. It is only going to be the groups that Next Up Action Fund approves of spoilers. Next Up Action Fund is full of DSA members. It's like.
Yeah, I'm glad you bring up that because I've never heard of that. Next up action thing.
Because they're a youth movement. You're not really supposed to have heard of them. You you'll notice if you the sort of our worst city council candidates, if you check their endorsements, that logo is right there. Huge logo, little upward facing arrow. Their colors are kind of like bright yellow. Yeah, they're just one of these little little groups that's a youth climate movement that cares a lot about Palestine. And also cares a lot about like they 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 sort of just keep getting off mission. And you start to kind of realize, oh, the mission isn't climate. You just you know that if you say it's climate.
There's this whole collection of other, yeah.
Well, and people are gonna let you into spaces they wouldn't let you into because nobody's gonna say, you can't tell the kids about the environment. That's crazy.
Yeah, that is kind of an interesting, like, I don't know, I in a sketch kind of way, I could see. You know, like if I was some kind of shitty salesman, I'd go in and say, hey, I'm here for the climate. And then I start selling them candy bars or whatever.
No, I mean, that's actually, but that's and that's totally it.
It seems like what's going on.
That's definitely what's going. That that's the wild and frustrating thing here because the climate like does matter like this is this is. You end up, you know, sounding like a crazy person because you're saying, oh, I don't want these climate activists in the school. And people are like, what are you talking about, Max? And I'm like, well, okay, first off, they're not climate activists. They're broadly activists across, you know? They're kind of using that intersectional lens to say.
Wide activism.
Well, isn't racial justice also climate? And if racial justice is also climate, isn't gender kind of the climate too? And now that I mention it, Israel's bombs are negatively impacting the climate. And this is literally an argument that they've made. If you look at bombs and yes, yeah, I it's wild. So yeah, th- this is. I just, when I was in high school, I'm I'm sure this was your experience too. I don't know how my teachers voted.
Yeah, well, you know.
No clue.
I was thinking about this this week too, and I feel like maybe this is my own theory, but I feel like it maybe it's because of these kind of groups pressuring kids to start thinking about this stuff younger. But I wasn't really politically involved, I would say, until I was like maybe sixteen or seventeen. And I hear more people now saying it's like it's like thirteen, like even. And I'm just like, when I was that age, I was just, I don't know, playing video games and like, I did not care about what was going on in the bigger world sense of things.
Yeah, I don't. Yeah.
But I do see that. I don't know. Maybe that's just my own perspective of like that getting skewing younger and like maybe that's because of this pressure and stuff. I don't know.
I mean, I was passionate about stuff when I was a teenager. I was like going to school, trying to pass out a a pro like a petition to try to save wolves, right? Like I was pat, but what my teachers didn't do is like give me a bunch of kudos for that and like invite me up to the front of the class and be like, Max has this thing about wolves. And we just think wolves are, you know, we gotta save the wolf. They they hands off. That wasn't their place.
My experience too. There was nobody having, I don't know, even like a photo or a logo of any candidate. I there was none of that. It seemed pretty neutral.
Even the even the student clubs, like the teachers who were the sponsors of those clubs, it was very like, I'm gonna sit in the room to be a legal chaperone in this space. And to make sure nothing crazy happens, but like, I'm not, this isn't about me. This is about the students. If you guys want to discuss. You know, peace treaties or whatever, great, we'll we'll do that, but I I just, I could not begin to tell you the politics of any of my teachers. Not a clue.
Yeah.
And if I I would be guessing. Uh, and I'm pretty happy to say that I know the kids that I train now, if they have any clue what my politics are, it's because they've Googled me. Or they're guessing because.
Took some effort on their part.
Yeah, I would never. That's just a total violation of the trust that parents put in me to be like, hey, what do you think about the DSA? Like, no, this is a fifteen year old. I'm not talking to a fifteen year old about the DSA. That's ridiculous.
This could be my own soapbox thing too, but like I, from my experience of just working in Portland too, it seems like. And I'll admit, I when I was a left, super left person, I used to be very open politically at work.
Yeah.
Now, as I'm older, I feel like that's kind of the overall mentality that I see is that's just okay to be that open about being left in Portland.
Yeah.
I try to be more buttoned up about it and not even talk about political stuff where I'm at, but. It's just, that's Portland, I think, is like, we're in this environment of like, it bleeds through to everything and every workplace and.
Yes.
But it it drives me crazy as I get older because I'm sometimes I'm just like, can we not like? Do this in this environment? Like you can do it wherever you want and you know, outside of this.
It's just gonna cause, yeah, it's just gonna cause fights. It's gonna, again, it's gonna alienate people at work. This is my Powell's example. You know, stands like there were people who working in that store, I didn't know those people well because I'm I am actually pretty far left. But there were people who felt very uncomfortable working there because they had a little more centrist politics, or maybe they had a different take on vaccines or something.
Or it's like, even if you don't have a position, sometimes that pressure caves in on you too.
Yeah, somebody's yelling at you this way. Yeah, somebody is yelling at you about Ukraine and you're just thinking like, I honestly, I don't even know where Ukraine is. Like, I just don't. It's like, I feel bad about that, but I don't. Like, that's okay. I've definitely I've been on first dates where some topic will come up and the other person will say like. I hate to admit this, but I just don't know anything about that topic. And you can tell they're embarrassed about it and I always have.
That's refreshing to me though.
That's great. Yeah, that's amazing. But you don't know, you're admitting.
I prefer somebody like that to somebody who's way partisan about, you know, just coming out strong, coming out of the gate.
I love people to admit that they have no idea. That's that's very attractive. Uh, I mean, it's like, but then you pay them that compliment and they go, oh, really? Because I'm so afraid to admit that I don't know thing. I can't please admit that. This I I'm passionate about the stuff I'm passionate about. I don't want. Everybody to have an opinion on this. Like, I don't even need people to agree with me on the DSA stuff in the schools necessarily, like whether it's. Whether you're pro DSA or anti DSA, it just shouldn't be in there. Like, we shouldn't be doing.
And it seems like, yeah, from from the whatever forty thousand foot level, you're just trying to let people know that it's happening.
Yeah, it's like, are you?
Be aware that, yeah, that's what's happening in our schools.
Are you comfortable that with a fringe political group that, by the way, since October seventh, has lost an enormous number of their national members? Over their antisemitism, over their pro violent rhetoric that didn't used to be there. Sarah Silverman famously wrote this piece. Which was published as an op ed where she was like, I've been a dues paying DSA member for like twenty years and I do not recognize you people any longer. You like you are the MAGA of the left and that's one hundred percent what they've become. But you say that and people have this this like almost acid reflux of like, no, but the most radical leftist in the world could never be as bad as a as a radical right winger. I'm like, well.
There's a new, I was trying to remember, there's a new term for that. I can't remember if it's MAGA left or MAGA progressive or something, but there's something going around that's.
Yeah, people have.
The equivalent of.
People have tried a couple. I know when the alt right was a big phrase, there was uh, it was like, somebody tried to patent the control left.
Or they were like.
Equivalent. Yeah, people have brought up the horseshoe theory. They're constantly trying to bring up the fact that like, hey, man, if you're posting photos of yourself holding an assault weapon. With like a weird caption about how you're gonna take care of your enemies and you're stockpiling canned goods. Like, I don't really care if you voted for Bernie or Trump. I'm like deeply uncomfortable with this whole image. And that's, I mean, when I, you know, when I was a, when I worked with Antifa, uh, when I was a far, far left activist, that was that was my discomfort. Like, I grew up in the South. I grew up around gun nuts who were, you know, thought the moon landing was fake and the government was coming for them. And I moved here and I got into leftist politics and all of a sudden I found myself in rooms with people who had too many guns. And were convinced the government was coming for them and had like bug out bags. And I just thought, I don't, yeah, I was like, I'm not interested. I don't want to own a bug out.
I just got out of this place to avoid this.
Like this, this is not, this, yeah. And it's those moments where you realize like, yeah, there's something about me. There's something inside myself that is attracted to that. But I don't know, I think about this like it's Portland, so I'll walk past a shop which has a sign in the window, which I just find just gross. It'll be some like.
All the political signs and stuff.
All the political signs.
I am so tired of it too. I just wish they just have nothing. Like, just put like a cute animal or something.
I walked past a shop there that it's a sign in the window that said prisons are slavery, just admit it. And I thought, but. I was like, this is gross.
Never seen that one. That's crazy.
Gross, right? Or I am Luigi, like all these just, yes, all these shitty signs. And I think in that moment, like, there's definitely a part of me who is like the dude who would throw a brick through that window, but I also realize. No, that's not how we behave in a civil society. So I'm gonna look at that. I'm gonna kind of like like smolder for a little bit and be like. And then I'm gonna go about my day because I don't want to live in a society where we're we're resorting to political violence. But I have to admit, like, yeah, I mean, I I ran with Antifa.
That's the old Max.
That's the old, and he's always there. It's just the growing up and realizing this is not appropriate. This is not an appropriate way to run a city. It's not an appropriate way to try to get things done. And that's why one of the big thrusts of this latest series I've been working on, on the Substack is that we need to re marginalize these marginal opinions. Marginalization is fine when like we marginalize far right activist. The Proud Boys are marginalized. They absolutely should be. You can't get rid of them.
That's, yeah, no, I totally agree. That's that's one of the reasons why I always try to like, well, people bring them up. I'm like. Yes, like you can go after them as much as you want, but I live in Portland, Oregon, and what I see are these other crazy groups.
Yeah.
That are just equally as crazy, you know, it's just like, and I just want more recognition to that and it's hard to do in Portland.
Yeah, and I'm not gonna, if I find out one of my colleagues in the strength training industry is a huge Proud Boy dude and I walk into his gym and there's like. Build the wall posters everywhere. I'm probably not coming back, right? You know what I mean? Like, I'm probably not gonna continue the relationship. So it's, you know, people are like, oh, talk about the far right. I I don't really need to because I I'm successfully joining you in marginalizing.
Yeah, and and the bigger message is, at least for me, that kind of hyper partisanship, I don't even know if it's partisanship extremism.
Yeah.
That's not what I want, but you know. I want. And I just see Portland still stuck in this hyper extremist mode and.
Yes.
So, yeah, I think we're.
And and.
Aligned in that getting it back to that, you know, twenty twelve, whatever you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, pick a year, pick a year that you loved Portland, uh, you know, it it just this idea that that was, that just wasn't good enough. Like tw- two thousand nine Portland wasn't good enough to to twenty twelve, like these were just, we weren't doing quite enough. And it's like, no, we had plenty of problems that needed to be fixed, but we didn't focus on fixing those problems.
Yeah.
We didn't focus on building more housing coming out of the two thousand eight collapse so that we wouldn't be in the situation we're in right now. We instead went, well, what about equity? It's like, okay, well, you know how to fix equity issues. Make sure there's enough housing so that everybody can afford to live here. Like, that's gonna, that's gonna be hugely impactful in an equity perspective, right? I.
There is a lot of projects like that too. I, you know, from the meetings I've been watching this month, there there was a transportation one and. They were just talking about how basically how fucked the transportation budget is, which everyone knows if you follow city politics, you know, Keybot's budget is gone, but. But I the funny thing about that is I just think, you know, like I walk around my neighborhood here. And they, the big thing they just did is they just painted all these um, whatever, the vertical bike symbol things all over. And it's just so weird because I hear all these things about how our roads are crumbling and all this stuff. And then you see this and it's like, so that's what they just spent. Hundreds of thousands of dollars in my neighborhood on is painting bike symbols. And but the problem is, it's it's so optically confusing because like, and they were saying this in the meeting, that was that was something that was probably approved years years ago.
Yeah.
They said, yeah, we're gonna do these, uh, what do they call them? Bike ways or whatever they call.
Bike boulevards and yeah, but yeah.
But it's just like they they're so short sighted that they don't think like, well, now we don't have money for road backlog, any kind of maintenance backlog that's, you know, ten years behind.
You, I mean, look at parks, right? Parks is a passion of mine.
It's just, but it's so frustrating because the optics of an average citizen, that's what I see when I walk around here is, oh, they just spent a bunch of money painting bikes, you know, white bike symbols on the road and. Well, still don't have sidewalks.
So this was explained to me a lot. So that that needle handout group that we deal with, it's a harm reduction group, right? I I talked to a.
Peepop?
Peepop. Uh, I talked to a public health expert and he was like, let me explain why harm reduction is so popular. Getting somebody clean is hard, is expensive, and you need some buy in from them. And at the end of a five year cycle, you're gonna spend, takes a long time. At the end of a five year cycle, you're gonna have spent X million dollars and you're gonna be, you're gonna hope. That you can say that you saved twenty five lives, twenty five human lives, which are absolutely priceless, and that's a miracle, but it's twenty five. It's a really low number. It's not a low number of you know those people. Those are lives saved.
Right.
But that's your metric. You got twenty five results and maybe you got twelve failures and that's really sad, but it's very low numbers. But if you hand out pipes and needles, every single box of needles you hand out to a human being, you get to count that as a tick.
Yeah.
And at the end of the year, you can say, I helped seven thousand people.
It's true. You compare those and it's like, one of them looks like a clear political win or a win on any sense. So, yeah, you can see why they continue to do it.
You can't build nearly as many miles or feet or however you want to measure your sidewalks. In the same like, but you can put down, we can be like, we put down ten thousand of those little white bike symbols. Hey, they probably did something good. I mean, they really weren't like a net negative or anything, but you, okay, ten thousand of those, what 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 could be done? What what could have, uh, what like sidewalks? What would that have done in sidewalks? And they're like. Six miles, six miles of sidewalks. And people are like, well, that doesn't sound good. And maybe we just need to rescale it and be like, bah, six miles is X thousand steps worth of, you know, like, I don't know if we need to. No, it's frustrating because it just, if you're looking to produce like a number at the end of the year and you're looking to make a like a bar graph or like a line on a chart go up.
See good performance, you in a political way.
Pick a really easy metric to inflate. Um, and yeah, I think there's something to that. But like you look at the parks, you said backlog, we got a six hundred million dollar parks backlog.
Yeah.
All of this like parks levy stuff that they're talking about is not for that.
It's for stuff ten years ago.
Yeah, or it's for like these, oh, I don't want to insult these programs. I like the programs in our parks. I just want to be really clear and. Clear my throat for a second. I think the cool accessibility and activation projects in our parks are good. I like the idea that children who have been previously underserved by the Parks Department are getting like free passes to go to classes and learn to swim. That is all amazing. That's amazing. But again, this is. We have parks that are just literally crumbling, right? They're not usable by anybody, not just marginalized populations. But like, nobody feels safe using this park because there's a machete guy in it or, yeah, like. The six hundred million dollar backlog, we don't have a plan to deal with that. We we're just like, and.
They're like, we'll work, we'll work our way through it over the next two decades.
I know, but the reason it's a six hundred million dollar backlog is it didn't start that way. It's it's things that were let go so long. That it went from like, it'll cost thirty thousand dollars to fix this, but if we don't fix it within the next five years, it will cost a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to fix it. And we were like, well, we don't have the money, so we're just gonna wait five, eight, ten years. And we're like, well, now it's three hundred thousand dollars to fix it. And it's the same problem. It's just been let go for that long. The reason it's six hundred million is it's, these are just compounding issues. Where, ah, we could have done a little bit of repaving on that bike path, but now it's so bad, we need to redo the entire bike path.
Like, gotta tear the whole thing up and.
Yeah, it's like letting black mold eat your house and then you're like, well, we should probably just tear the thing down to the studs and just.
Right.
That's what we've done. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it's it is definitely. I was thinking, do you do you have any? I guess more thoughts about, because everyone's just talking about this hundred million dollar shortfall this year. That's just this year, I believe, right?
That's that's this year.
Uh, with our city council or the city budget. I don't know how they're gonna. I don't know. It's it's gonna be rough for everyone on the council and the mayor and.
Yeah, it and I don't, I don't, I don't envy them. Like, I don't envy them at all. It's gonna be really, really hard. Uh, we're gonna have to cut services. We straight up are. It's just gonna come down to which services. I I'm gonna say a nice thing about a DSA member. Samir Kanal.
Yeah.
Uh, I think said something really, really honest, which is that, you know, we can find a good chunk of this money in just gross inefficiencies. We've we just gross inefficiencies.
I mean, I'm always done for that, yeah.
We switched to a new form of city government. We switched to a new form of city government. We hired a bunch of new administrative positions to support that. We did not cut any of the previous positions. So there are redundants. And I mean, that sucks because you're gonna have to like re. Retrain somebody to do a new job or just let them go, but there are jobs that no longer need to exist because they literally exist to support a form of government that we don't have any longer. We don't, we can cut any of those people because normally what we would do in good budget times is we would give that person kind of a runway. To retrain and reposition and we would give it like, we'd give it some breathing room. And at the end of a couple of years, we'd realize like. John doesn't actually do anything, like no offense to John, he, he's gotta go, so we'll move him somewhere else. We don't have that breathing room. So, you know, we can find that money by probably cutting John's job, um, but.
I mean, yeah, I support anything like that. I feel like Portland's probably fraught with it, um, at least the city and the county probably.
And then we've got city workers striking, we've got.
I think that's this week, right? Is that they're supposed to.
The public sector unions are like, we, we wanted to raise, the raise you offered is not good enough. We, we got issues. We got issues there. That I think is gonna be a big fight for the DSA because I think the DSA is going to go to the mat for the unions no matter what. And I think that's something that the public needs to pay attention to. Again, not from an anti-union perspective, but just if you've offered the union, what you can afford to give them. And they've said, no, we need much more than that, that the public is gonna have to decide. Is that, is that reasonable? Can you just keep giving people raises forever? Look at the teacher's strike, right? That was a disaster. Yeah.
Well, in the city, if the strike does, you know, if they vote to do it, um, I think it's this week, but I can't remember. Yeah, that'll be a really interesting one to me because, and I could be, you know, totally wrong about this, but I feel like the public's image of the city. Is probably from the old council is what they think about, but when they think about city services, I think the. Mor- morale, whatever you wanna call it, performance is so low that I don't see them being on the city union side. Because they kinda see the poor performance of the past several years, but like we are such a pro-union city, it's hard to tell.
That's, that's where people's values are gonna clash up against reality. It's the same thing as the teachers' union, the teacher's strike. On the surface, do you support teachers? It's like a really easy yes.
Everyone wants to say yes.
Yeah, because it's an emotionally charged question, of course. My family's like mostly teachers, but they were asking for things we didn't have. And yeah, there's some huge inefficiencies in PPS that have nothing to do with the teachers, right? There's hu- we need to fix that stuff, but. They were asking for things that didn't exist and couldn't be given. Um, and that. I mean, that did damage to union perception in the city. So I think you're right. As much as we are still a union town, and I think there are people who are just gonna die. Union supporters, they'd rather the city go bankrupt than, than betray the union. I think a lot of Portlanders are gonna start saying, man, should public sector unions even exist? And that's not what unions, that's not the question. If you're a union president. You don't want people asking that question out loud all the time. You want people to go, man, I love our unions. They seem to really have our backs, like.
It's just so problematic and even with the budget stuff we were just talking about, it seems like asking for a huge raise right now is way problematic and also. Could be wrong about this again, but I feel like city employees already get paid pretty well. I don't know. I could be totally wrong about that, but.
This is where.
I don't, and that's another thing. I don't think that public would be on their side with, hey, we need a big raise right now.
It's the same thing with the teachers. It's like, I, I'm so sorry to any teachers that are about to be offended by what I'm about to say. I'm sure you're great. I, I love you, but the starting salary for a Portland public school teacher. Is very competitive nationally. I'm being.
You're saying in the union?
Yeah, I'm being, I'm being conservative when I say very competitive. It's goo- it's good. And now is it good for Portland? I don't know. Portland cost of living's gone up a lot. It's really stressful to live here. Even if you're getting paid sixty seven, seventy thousand dollars a year. Uh, my brother's a teacher. My grandmother was a teacher. My dad's. Degree is in education. My family is littered with teachers. They, they didn't get paid seventy thousand dollars. They just didn't. I'm not saying that's right. I'm just saying a lot of people are stuck in this mentality. If we don't pay teachers enough and they're thinking forty thousand dollars a year. And yeah, that's not enough. That's ridiculous. But what they're not thinking about is, uh, I mean, we've. We have some of the most expensive schools per student in the country and we perform horribly. And it's not worth dumping on the teachers for that, but it is worth, if you are a teacher and you are in a union and you were thinking about striking. Or you're a city worker and you're in the union and you are thinking about striking, you need to think about the fact that even though, yeah, price of eggs is up. You're making more and you got better benefits than a lot of people in the city and you're striking. Yeah, it just doesn't look good. It looks really bad.
Yeah, I'll be curious to see what happens with that. Um, and good luck to anyone with a, good luck to Keith and all those people. Plugging through the budget.
Poor Keith.
I was gonna ask you really quick, uh, you, uh, do you, are you still thinking about twenty twenty six running for anything?
I, I'm gonna run as a chaos candidate. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be real clear about it. In the meantime, I'm gonna focus on other stuff, but yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not. Running as a serious attempt to win a seat. Uh, I think the DSA did something really smart when they ran. Their most brand friendly candidates and they also ran some real wingnuts. I'm not gonna run as a wingnut, but I am going to, I, somebody's gotta be able to get on that microphone and, and point out. Half the people on the stage wanna actually crash our rental economy, like our, our rental market. Like they do wanna do that. That's a goal that they actually have. Stop voting for these people. Uh, you can't afford for your good candidates to do that, you know? Eli Arnold can't, and I'm not saying Eli Arnold feels this way. I'm just saying hypothetically. Eli Arnold can't hop on a stage and point out that, that, that Mitch is interested in crashing the rental market. That he, that's, that's just, he can't wrestle in that mud. Um, so yeah, I, I'm gonna.
I think it's great, yeah.
Somebody, somebody has to, somebody has to get up there and point out like. There's, there's crazy people on this stage that are pretending not to be crazy.
Yeah, no, I think it's great. And I do think, I don't know if it's the same people you were talking about, but I do think that there will at least be some seats that'll be vulnerable in that election that'll be up for grabs and.
I mean, I, I think really in many ways because Portlanders hate two-term politicians for some reason. Uh, we really like to unseat people. I think all the, I mean. Olivia and Steve are in safe enough spots. They're just, they, they are the closest thing to a mandate that we got. They, they got, they would have won in a non-ranked choice voting, right? Uh, so I think they're pretty safe unless they really screw up. Uh, but I think even, you know, people with strong support like Eric Zimmerman or, or Tiffany and Angelique, I think, yeah, I think they're at risk. I think, I think those seats can be flipped. Um, it's just.
Especially now, yeah, I can't, I always forget about the twenty, what, twenty-five percent, twenty, the threshold that you have to.
Yeah, they got a.
It's a little easier to hit that.
And it feels like they got a lot of votes because they were the number two and number three spot. When, when you look at how many thousands of people voted for them, you start thinking. So I got like two thousand, two. It's not much. Um, so that's, I think those seats are vulnerable and I think we should. We should try to get, uh. A better representation for Portland. I am not arguing for a city council that is all center-left. I think we should have some progressives. We should have some more moderate people. I think we should represent the broad swath of Portland. What I am saying is that the DSA. I feel like I'm telling people that smoking is bad and it's the eighties and they're like, but smoking's so cool. Like, I'm just telling you.
That's a good analogy. I like.
Yeah, you were sold a product and I'm just telling you it's got ingredients in there that they didn't tell you about, like, um, you know. Jesse, Jesse Cornet, great progressive candidate for district three, should have won. There's no reason.
Jesse was one that I was kinda stumped on. It didn't seem like he made a lot of headway at all.
Well, he was, he was blocked at every.
Because of all these groups.
Yeah, they shut him out. They shut up. I mean, this is the same thing. Dan Ryan got all of the LGBT groups pulled their endorsements from him. That was, that's orchestrated. That is, that is a message that you're not with us on every single issue. You didn't wanna abolish the police. Well, then it doesn't matter if you're a gay man who openly advocate, there's nothing Dan Ryan has ever voted for or advocated. That is even remotely counter to the mission of an LGBTQ group, right? He is, he is their ally because he is them and they pulled their endorsements of.
It is wild. Well, I was thinking if he wasn't previously elected, that probably would have had way more effectiveness.
I don't think he would have survived that race if he hadn't, if he had, if he didn't have that name recognition. And I, I like Dan, but yeah, that to me is ridiculous. It's ridiculous that you've got progressive candidates like Jesse, you've got, you know. Absolutely not just allies, but actual LGBTQ candidates running, getting snubbed by the organizations, you know. You've got Asian candidates getting snubbed by Apano. You've got Latino candidates getting snubbed by the Latino network. What, what are we doing? Like, what are we doing?
Well, yeah, I hope you do run and, you know, that'd be cool. Um. Uh, is there anything else like serious you wanna get? I was just gonna ask your Northwest story for anyone who doesn't know. You, you were saying you came here from the South.
I did, sort of. I moved here in oh five. Uh, I moved here in oh five from Arkansas, uh, from a little town called Jonesboro, Arkansas. Only famous for, um, bad things, like little school shootings and murder trials. It's a, yeah.
I've never heard of it, yeah.
Uh, it's, it's like forty-five to fifty minutes from Memphis. So Memphis is the city that I grew up next to. Yeah, it's, yeah, and that's that like, I, you know, you go to Memphis on the weekends. That's kinda what informs my, um, yeah. So if I get along well with people in East Portland, it's, it's because functionally I'm from Memphis. Uh, yeah.
And you were saying you, that you were, Portland appealed to you in, in that sense that you were talking about earlier.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I was the kid who was never, I was always way too progressive for the people around me. I was never really happy with the status quo. Uh, I wanted to move to the West Coast. I did that thing, like young radical idealistic kids do. I couldn't afford California because when you're coming from Arkansas. Your money is gonna get cut in half. Like, you're, you know, you just, you have half enough money. So I sold my car. And moved to, moved to Oregon because it was the city I could afford. And at that time. It was, it was like it had all those, those promising things. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That is, yeah, it's funny because it's really similar to, I did basically the same thing, but I moved just here from a small town in Oregon. But same exact thing. I was too progressive for the town I was in and it was two thousand five. I think it was the same year. But yeah, I was just like, I'm going to the city and.
And Portland was a little scrappy then. It was a little scrappy, although, yeah, I think we get a little gaslit when people like. I mean, just go back to two thousand five and it was just as bad as it is now. I'm like, no, it was scrappy. You still had to watch your back at night. No, no, no.
I lived downtown right when I moved here and I didn't have a car. I'd walk around all the time. I mean, I'm sure you do.
I lived across the street from the psycho Safeway.
Me too.
Yeah.
Tenth, tenth and Jefferson.
Tenth and Jefferson, uh, the, uh, Ongford?
No, I, that was next to me, but I was in the St. James.
So yeah, we were right. We were neighbors.
Yeah, that is funny. I actually never knew that.
That's awesome.
But yeah, I would walk around all there and it was fine. Never had any issues.
No, I mean, you had to like at night, you know, a dude would walk up to you and be like, hey man, can I borrow your cellphone? Like a lot of, you know, but whatever.
Any city would have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Normal, that, that's the thing I, I keep having to stress to people. We're not idiots. We, we're not like naive. We know we live in the down, like I know I live in Northwest. I know there's occasionally gonna be a dude rooting around in the garbage that I gotta go be like, hey man, what's up? How you doing? That, that's normal. It's, it's the scale and it's the intensity. Uh, yeah, but yeah, uh, moved here in oh five. Um, so I got to see kinda Portland like, come up in a big way and then collapse.
It was, yeah, kind of a rise and fall.
Yeah.
Cool. Um, okay, yeah, is there anything else? Political or anything else you wanna talk about before I, I have a bunch of goofy questions.
No, let's go, let's go to the goofy questions.
I got some new ones in here that I'd never asked.
You're not gonna ask me Taco Bell stuff?
I'll ask you, yeah.
I'm not gonna have much.
I've, I've heard, I've heard that answer sometimes. Uh, I'll start with, do you like crunchy or smooth peanut butter? Maybe you don't like.
Oh, it's smooth. It's smooth. Smooth, uh, no stir.
Okay.
I'll do a stir, but smooth, no stir.
I will say that I just ordered. I mostly get my groceries through Amazon, which makes me sound like a piece of shit, but, uh, but I got some and I don't know if it's stir or no stir. When it shows up, I'll find out, but it's kinda risky because I, I don't like the stir stuff as much.
I'm all right with it. I'll do it.
Yeah, it's like, I'll put up with it.
Yeah.
Um, do you like, do you like those circus animal cookies? Do you know what I'm talking about? The pink and white ones?
The pink and white ones with the weird coating?
Yeah.
Oh, man, this is so hard. They, I, I, I like them in, in my heart. And then when I put them in my mouth, I'm like, this is not, I knew this wasn't gonna be that good, but. Culturally, I want them to be good, like, like a naked animal cracker, absolutely.
Well, that's what I was looking, how do you, how do you, when you compare that with the, is that what they're called? The, the beige ones or whatever?
Yeah, you're just, yeah, yeah, it's just an animal, just a basic animal.
You like those ones better.
Those are great. Those are just a shortbread cookie shaped like.
The ones that look like the train car.
The Barnums, yes. Those are perfect. Yes, but the coat, the, the one, yeah, the animal cookies, the, the coated ones you can get at the deli. Yeah, they're fine, but I, I get them. And I want them to be magical.
This is the first time I've asked it and I kind of agree with you because it's, I, I think it's one of those things as a kid, it was like awesome. And now when you get them, it's like, nah, nothing special. Um, okay, do you, I've never asked this one either. Do you use an alarm? Like, what's your like alarm situation? How do you wake up?
I, I wake up with two alarms. I don't wanna be a two alarm person. I know, I'm like a strength coach and I'm supposed to be teaching people.
Does it require, like it actually goes off or is that just for your own? Cause I do that too, but I wake up before.
Oh, no, I'm a snoozer. I, I, I wake up too early. I'm not naturally a morning person, but I train people and people gotta train before work, so I'm up at five thirty every morning. There's not a reality in which I would wake up at five thirty on my, I would wake up at six forty-five-ish, like we're on the dot. That would be fine. I could wake up on my own, yeah. But five thirty is ridiculous. So, yeah, no.
That is kind of, I've, I've noticed, is that like the most, because I follow some trainers on Instagram and stuff and I see people like five in the morning. Is that super, is that like the most popular?
Yes, six and seven and six and seven are the most popular. I won't do six. I tried it for a couple of years. I had to wake up like, no.
I'm an early bird and that's.
I was a bad trainer. I just straight up told clients, I was like, I can't. Yeah, my, my brain hurts. I don't wanna be here and I like, and just in general, I'm a worse person, but seven. So every morning I have like a seven and an eight. Yeah, that's, those are, those are, those are booked forever. Like. When somebody calls me and they're like, hey, I'm looking for a personal trainer. You got any sevens? And I just kinda laugh. Like, no one has sevens, man, but okay.
It's the most asked for thing. Do you, this is kind of a random question, but do you, you don't have like a, like my dad will send me stuff like this sometime. You have like an old school alarm clock, like the.
No, 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 I do, I do the phone. I do the phone. Yeah, I do the phone because I can set the sounds and I can pick a sound. I find that old school digital alarm clock so triggering, like when it's in a movie. That, there's still a part of me that's like, hit it faster, hit it faster. Yes, that tone, not the old, like not Groundhog's Day, right? Like not the old, old school.
Not the ones with the bells, but you're talking about the ones with the red.
We're talking nineties. We were talking the peak nineties, that particularly shrill, and it's that sound for a reason because you can't sleep through that, but, um, no, I find it. Well, yeah, I, yeah.
Did you, have you ever slept through alarms?
Yeah.
I did one time when I was working in TV and I felt so bad, but I was working, I was literally doing. This is gonna make me sound so great, but I, I would do the eleven o'clock news. I would sleep for like two hours and then go in for the. Morning show, which would start at like four thirty in the morning.
Yeah.
So I was slept for, I was supposed to sleep for a couple of hours, but I completely slept through the whole morning show.
So this is where I used to sleep through alarms all the time before I became a coach. Um, I think this is on some subconscious level. I do think like, I love my job. I actually love it. I have slept through one alarm ever. I was mortified. I sent the client this like, Jess, like, oh man, I failed you utterly. And he was like, dude, it's, you're like refunding the hour. I really don't care. It's fine. I'm just gonna sleep. He was like, it's really fine. You've never done this. I doubt you'll ever do it. And I never did, but like, yeah, back when I used to just work like crappy retail jobs. Yeah, I would oversleep alarms like once a year, right? Like not that often, but it would happen. And I can think because there's some part of, you know, your half sleepy brain where you're like. Just storables in the pearl really need a second cashier this morning. Like who cares? Who cares?
Um, and yeah, it's funny. I was just thinking, but I can't even remember. I'm pretty sure I shut my alarm up. Am I asleep when that happened to me? That one, the time I was talking?
Oh, you definitely do.
But I'm like a, a super light sleeper, but that was, I think I was just super tired or something.
I'm not, I'm, I.
That's what I was saying. You sound like you're a heavy sleeper.
If you're gonna burglarize my house, just wait till about two AM, you just.
Coming with the chainsaw, it's sounding super loud.
Now I have a cat and she knows how to wake me up, which is really good. If there's something concerning, my cat will actually wake me up. It's really, it's, it's useful. Yeah, she's, she's a good team player. Yeah, she's a good team player. If something spooky happens, she'll, she'll, she'll get over and kinda like, she knows just how to kinda like. Jostle me to get me awake, which is really useful.
I'm envious of that though, because I, any little thing will just wake me up and it, sometimes it drives me crazy, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, do you believe in Bigfoot?
Uh, no, probably not.
What's like the most, because I have aliens on here.
I know, I saw you posted that alien stuff this morning.
Is there anything like that you believe in? That thing's pretty cool, right?
Okay, so I, I don't know. I don't know anymore. I used to be, I was like hardcore. I wasn't just agnostic. I was like atheist. Science rationalist dude. I didn't.
I pretty much am still.
Yeah, but I was like, I didn't believe in UFOs or anything. I had a fairly profoundly religious experience. Last year, which unmoored a lot of that.
Okay.
So I'm not.
Put you a little more elevated on the spiritual kind of thing.
My best friend is like a deeply spiritual woo person. If she ends up hearing this, she's gonna be like, ha, 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 because she was so. Happy that I was like, alright, fine, my logic and reason is coming apart at the seams, but I don't, I, Bigfoot and aliens, I don't, I don't know.
Log this monster? No, I'm just.
No, I just think people. No, I just think people, it's so interesting that people want it to be true so badly. I'm not saying I'm positive. It's not, I just don't, I'm personally like, I'm unconvinced. I'm unconvinced.
It's fine, it's all good. Um, what's a movie you could watch on repeat for the rest of your life?
I do on repeat watch, um, like any of the old like Rankin and Bass. Not the, not the, not the stop motion, yeah, not the stop motion Christmas stuff, but the animated stuff.
I know that one, they did one of the Lord of the Rings, right?
They did, they did the Hobbit and the Return of the King. They did like, it wa, it was like, they were connected to a lot of Japanese. Like animation studios at the time. So any of that like eighties, late seventies, early eighties, The Last Unicorn, Flight of Dragons. I will, if I'm sick or just like not feeling it or just deeply depressed, I will, yeah. They're magical in a way that, yeah, any, and, uh, Rankin and Bass is actually responsible for Thundercats.
Okay.
Which is why of all the eighties toy cartoons, Thundercats still looks amazing cuz it was.
Their animation is good. It's interesting, yeah.
Really weird and, yeah, but.
Unique, I would say.
Yes, it's unique, but it is extremely high quality. Yeah.
Okay, that's a good answer. Um, there was one other thing I was gonna, it's not even really a question, but. I'm just complaining, but it, it kinda reminded me of what we were just talking about, the spiritual people or whatever, but, um, I've just. I'm, I'm trying to. Push away people that's, it may sound like an a-hole, but I don't like people using the word journey anymore. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
I just, when somebody says that and brings that up, I'm just like, I'm out.
Yeah.
Like, it just.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
I, no, I do, I do. I, let me.
I'm just complaining.
Oh, no, I wanna try, I wanna try to unpack this. So I think it's, cuz it's like the hero's journey, right? It's the, it's the monomyth, um, which is great for storytelling. Storytelling is so cool. We tell stories, but when you're telling, like, I mean, stories are lies. I mean, there, there, there's a lot of truth in them, but yeah, I think if you're, if you're on a journey. Then you're the main character. And like, we've already introduced this main character syndrome. I'm like, yeah.
What's going on big time in this country?
Yeah, and I mean, okay, like, let's talk about the toxic aspects of myself that was so driven to like radical activism. I think I was on a journey. I was like, I, like, a lot of these kids, a lot of the twenty twenty protesters, they, they wanna live in interesting times. They wanna be on a journey because they are not comfortable with the fact that real life, just the normal, beautiful, everyday things.
Just pedestrian stuff.
They're not actually boring. If you zoom in, they're beautiful, but zoomed out, they're kinda boring. Like, they're just like.
Yeah.
If you're just like gonna sit with your dog today and read a book, like, I actually think that's beautiful, but from a zoomed out perspective.
Well, especially when you mix in social media and stuff and you see people having the time of their lives on there and then they're just like, I gotta do that too.
Yeah, everything's so amplified. You can't just disagree with something. You gotta throw a Molotov cocktail at it or whatever. Yeah, but, but it's the same thing with like, yeah. Like, I had a profoundly religious experience last year. I am not on a spiritual journey.
Yeah.
I had a moment that just made me reconsider some stuff. It's that simple.
I was just saying it to, I think the most thing that I associated with and I think of is like, there's a lot of like influencers and coach, not your type of coaches, but like.
Oh, no, yeah, 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 yeah.
And they get into a lot of that stuff and it just gives a lot of like self-importance and weight that wouldn't otherwise.
Yeah.
Attach itself to somebody, but.
And there's a toxic reverse. I think that's, yeah, it can be used as a motivational tool to try to get somebody to change something about their lives. But there's a toxic like reverse. It's like a double-edged sword where it's like, well, if you're on this journey of self-improvement, like what happens if you backslide?